Get signed in at the yellow pad. Okay, thank you. Okay, it is six o'clock. Chuck Morris is joining us by Zoom tonight. He has a medical issue and advice by his doctor was to join by Zoom. So at this point, I'd like to call a meeting to order. The motion to approve agenda. Chuck, are you unmuted?
Yes, well.
Yeah, I'll say.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this time, if everybody would please rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open up this time for public comments. Try to ask everyone to keep it at five minutes if they can. Whoever would like to start? Is there anybody here? Do you, sir?
My name is John C. Mayer. I'm here in regards to D Avenue and the dust on D Avenue. And the reason I'm here is to hopefully we can address this issue. We've, uh, I've been here before on it. I'm a homeowner off of D Avenue on 110th Street. I use it regularly to, uh, going to Shannonville for work and also into Essex and to cut over on 59. On this, uh, on D Avenue, we have traffic coming and going from 270th Street that cut down through D Avenue into 48 and into Essex from there, east and west. We have traffic from 110th Street from east and west from people in the area. This road is heavily used. Like I said, from north and south on 270, they use it back and forth. It's a, it's a major issue we're having out there. And, uh, they use it, uh, from 130th Street coming in from 59 to cut over the, or 130th cutting over to 59. Also, the, uh, obviously, there's too much traffic on this road. It, it needs to have a hard surface on this. The quality of life for everyone in the area is suffers due to the constant dust cloud of traffic kicking out, uh, back and forth. There's, uh, multiple homes that live on this short stretch of road, uh, within a, you know, a couple miles of, uh, of D Avenue. And everyone in the area suffers from the traffic going, going back and forth. What, uh, I'm asking for is, uh, we could use chip seal to put down on this. It's cost effective. I understand that it's, it's not as inexpensive as gravel, but there's also cost of people on gravel roads too. And, uh, chip seal is, uh, a low cost alternative to gravel that we could put down to eliminate the issue that is on this road. I think, uh, if we can eliminate this, the, uh, it would not have a large impact on the budget. Looking at the budget, it seemed to be in pretty good shape from what we're seeing. And, uh, we're not asking for 20 miles of asphalt here. We're asking for two miles, more or less, of chip seal for everyone in the area of Northwest Page County that uses this. And we need your help to address this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any else want to talk?
Yeah, quite possible. I live on D Avenue, right on the road. And, uh, I got my semi. I'm going in and out all the time. And, uh, you know, nobody drives out of somebody's gravel dust. Everybody always drives on the dust. And to get into my drive, I gotta swing in the left lane, turn in. And there's been many a times when there's a car, I'm turning right into my drive. They're almost turning into a train because I'm turning and they're not paying attention. And, uh, so we've had multiple accidents with these puddles that are on this road because we can't keep gravel on it. You can't put gravel on the board. He graded it this morning and in less than 10 hours on the way over here, puddle was there. And, uh, so there's that much traffic in less than 10 hours. And, uh, that corner, you know, Highway 59 project's gonna be coming in. In the corner of J-14 and M-41 with this gravel dust, we've had people have to set that stop sign for long time because it just humps. And, uh, you're talking about safety, you're gonna have all these outer, outsiders coming in. And, uh, we're gonna sit there, not wait. We're gonna have accidents. And I farm right there on that key corner. And we've had a bunch of, you know, in the past, we've had cars go right through that because nobody pays attention and end up in a field. And something to think about would be like a red flash light or something for these, when this project comes into play for safety. But like I said, it's a, it's a major issue with this dust and puddles. Many of accidents, rollovers, people have heard, even up there in county line. Up there in Montgomery County line. And when 59 closes, you're gonna have all this traffic from the northwest of us that usually go over 59 to go to Shannon. Well, they're gonna come back over to our road and get straight south because it's gonna zip right back up to the E-ter. So that's what I was thinking, if we could do something with this road, like I said, chip seal or do, you know, something because it's gonna be a major problem now, especially for 59, E-ter fans. Appreciate it.
Thanks again.
I'm Brian Johnson. I live on, for D Avenue and 110th Street. As the few gentlemen before me said, there's a lot of safety issues involved with this. Where we live right on the corner, there's, I'm surprised nobody's been in our yard yet because one said the dust is very, very bad. And I've seen several, almost accidents where people are backing down. I'm also president of the school board. I've watched, our class was pulled up there before. And he had backup intersection. You could not see. This road, if you go back 10, 12 years, I believe, is it this one? It used to be blacktop. And all the, all the boards, then JD one up here, those history back on that, not sure, all that. When it gave out one spring, they went to ground it up. The problem with the gravel on it is you're putting gravel on it, it's blacktop. You take a spade out there, you run this little hole, it's still blacktop for me. And they do a good job, they can try and keep the gravel on it. But as one said, if they were maintaining this morning and it's already off, and you're putting it on the same concrete, it's gonna go off the turn pattern. And cost effective wise, they're on that road maintaining a lot of normal gravel, rather than not. Similar dangers to a normal gravel. I think if you look at it, I think it would be feasible to do. I do have the fear that there is going to be a bad accident on these things. Especially when people turn it on and off that road. On Montgomery County, it's never paid there, but there's no house that's that way, there's no intersection. Or three miles, it, it gets very dangerous. You have a lot of people coming that way to Red Road. And that's not gonna change, no matter what we do. And a lot of them go very fast. And I hope you gentlemen would look at this and at least come over to our side and carry and take good looks for yourself. Evening are very bad. And I'm afraid one of these days, there's gonna be cars that might fall out of your yard. And I have a friend, a 40 year old, who likes to play out there. And I don't want anything to happen. To him, I don't want anything to happen. People drive by. So hopefully we'll take this part and come look at it and see what can be done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. JD, I think you're up. Are you ready?
Looks like it's a Page County Road Show. I'm JD, the engineer. We'll start out with engineer's update. I'll pass one on. This week we've been hauling with our, with four trucks, three cabins, and a belly dump of blades around the district where the operators are available. We're cutting brush with the skid steer and the brush mower, although it was, it was in the shop this morning, I noticed. The pipe crew worked on a crossroad pipe up off 130th near the weir that we worked on this past year. That was yesterday and part of today, and then it moved down to North Pole today on F Avenue near the east of town. Yesterday, the maintenance guys provided some help to the bridge crew. And I'll be circling back to that from time to time.
Sorry JD, I didn't mean to have the touchline.
There's a few few things in the shop. The skid steer was in there with joystick control not working right. Prepping mowers in anticipation of grass growing on the roadside. And they also did some help to the bridge crew yesterday. So yesterday we placed the deck on F-20, the Singspan Bridge, east of Russell Corner on J-20. It was, uh, it was longer than planned. I don't have enough fingers and toes to talk about what went wrong, but we do have a bridge deck. At the end of the day, I took my grandkids up and we looked at the deck and the water. The curing process was underway. That's 110 foot long, 30 foot wide. Be an improvement for the truckers using J-20. Contracted to be working on the open rail next. Then there'll be a series of subcontractors in, and that's key to keeping this bridge on schedule is to have a subcontractor show up in a timely manner. We got a approach subcontractor and a bit of paving contractor. And some of this is a function of getting a DBE enterprise, or disadvantaged business enterprises, which is, uh, one of the hooks that comes with federal money. On, on the agenda this evening is, uh, Warden Schilberg Construction, a local rock contract. We have local roads, foreign market roads and federal aid roads. And those different classifications of road impact what kind of money we can use on this. We also have a budget amendment for FY-21. Fiscal year 22 DOT budget, then program. What you have with me is even no fancy slides, just, uh, just paper. I've got a decent looking map. One that I don't have to decipher the colors on because it has names and, and years. Also made the screw, a contract made and screwed, finished up from crack scene and work on J-20 east of 71, and that continued over into Taylor County. So that helped out with the mobilizations. There's, uh, there's another possible federal grant funding opportunity out there. I'm working on with the SwiftCo folks through the RPA. Turns out that, uh, earmarks are back in the federal government. Each, uh, representative, each congressional district gets, uh, gets, designates some projects. So I'm not certain how a bridge project will show up in the, uh, in the mix with climate change and, and equity here and there and setting up electrical charge, charging for electrical vehicles, but, but, uh, a bridge replacement is where we need infrastructure. So questions about the engineer's update?
I don't have anything, JD. Chuck, do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Move on to the, uh, discussing a work on for the local contract for rock.
The engineer's office received bids last Thursday at 11 o'clock. We received one bid that then brought it over to the auditor's office where they were open and read. And I would recommend to the board of supervisors that they award rock, local rock contract. So this is local money, so we're using on local roads. Uh, there's a map out there somewhere. I don't have it with me today, but it's 12,426 points, point zero tons of rock. As you recall, it's 41 miles we're gonna cover. 300 tons a mile for a contract value of to Schilberg Construction Company out of Deere, Iowa, no, Greenfield, Deere County.
Can I get the vice chairman to sign this and chairman?
Yeah, absolutely. Just a quick question, JD, the...
Wants, wants to, uh, approve it. Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question. The, the tonnage per mile, what did, could you give me that number again, please?
300 done per mile.
Okay. Is that gonna result in that really thick, uh, that we talked about before?
Some people think it's thick. I don't. I think it's proper amount.
What was their price per ton? What does that come to?
$21.48. That's furnishing haul. Furnishing haul. We, we have a blade that spreads it. If they don't...
Is it inch and quarter road rock or what is it?
Inch and quarter, yes.
Well, I'd make a motion that we, uh, accept the bid of Schilberg Construction on this local rock haul.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item is gonna be to discuss and approve the fiscal year 21 DOT budget amendment. Did you bring copies with or, I, I've got it on. Okay, okay, okay. I'll give you patience.
The fiscal year 21 budget amendment is due primarily to the EWP work that was done this fiscal year. We did construction on 12 weirs, reconstruction or repair on 11. We had one new one on 160th Street near end. I believe it was by Tom's speedlot. We spent $4.2 million on EWP projects in the county. We reimbursed from the RCS to 2, 75%. I think that was about 3.2 million. Hungry Canyons came in with 10%. And therefore, Bates County, portion of that, $630,000. And since this is done after the levy was sent, money for that is gonna be taken out of the carryover balance. So you'll see carryover balance drop from this year to next year. There was also more costs with, uh, with engineering. We, we hired out most of the weir design. We did the inspection and survey and, and planning, but a good deal of the, of the design was done outside Bates County by JD O. Who has offices in Carroll and Lincoln and Omaha. Wait, there, uh, the construction, if you look, uh, on the third page, construction is $4,583,000. The difference between that was a couple hundred thousand spent this year, this fiscal year on the, the bridge north of Shannonville on A there by Rat Park. The majority of that was spent in year 2020. This year 2020, but 200,000 or so was spent in this fiscal year because it carried, even though we poured the deck in March, the bridge wasn't open till August. Pretty slow.
Any questions, Captain Jacobson?
So when I talk about the budget, if you look at the, the top right number on the second page, the second page has the, uh, receipt, the road department. It's at 2.5, or $2,578,000. And then at the bottom, bottom of the third page, where we're, you know, of course, the total we're counting for $11 million. The carryover balance at the end of the year is anticipated to be, expected to be, we're not there yet, got a few ones to go, 1.9 million.
600 something dollars.
670,000. We could go beat it up on the 12 category, but, uh, we got other stuff to do, more important. Questions about the amended budget for fiscal year 21?
We're all done with weirs. No, no, all that's done.
The weirs are done.
Yes, we're done with page four, and we've been reimbursed back what money we're gonna get. Now, I will say that there's, there's a bank slump on one of our projects down beyond where the rock stops. But that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing these past 15 years. And, uh, we'll have to do some repairs. I'm sure the land, the landlord, I'm sure is aware, were aware of it. And he's expecting a call.
So question JD, uh, what's the next $4 million project you can find that we can, uh, spend just $600,000 on? Can you find one of those again?
I'm, uh, looking. I'll be looking.
Okay. The, uh, the two, uh, just, uh, in summary real quick for people that they've heard the weirs talked about a lot and weirs are infrastructure, they're very important, but, uh, unnoticed if you don't live out or own the land adjacent, but the life of our bridges is extended because of these projects, and we know how extensive bridges are. And maybe more importantly than that, uh, we're, we're saving some valuable land from erosion by doing these, uh, weir projects. So thanks to you and your team. And I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, budget amendment.
I'll second that. Okay. All those in favor of approving the fiscal year 21 DOT budget amendment, signify by a sign of aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, I'll pass unanimously. Okay. Up next.
Thank you. Next would be the fiscal year 22 budget, budget that starts on, uh, 1 July this year.
Thank you, sir.
Now, this is one page front and back. Because sometimes I hate my career. I was tired sticking three painters together. So you don't have the cover sheet, but I do. And, uh, so let's, let's talk about this a little bit. This is the same, not, these are the same numbers as was pre- This is the same, these are the same numbers as was presented in the county budget when Melissa did this last month or something. The numbers haven't changed, they're just in a slightly different arrangement. Instead of four and a half million dollars of local construction, you know, we we it's local if it runs, if the money runs through the county. So the weir projects ran through the county. We wrote checks, we got money back. Construction, that's foreign market or federal aid or swap monies, we write, we send vouchers to the DOT. They sent checks to the contractors and then that subtracted away from our construction checkbook, if you will. Construction this year, local construction this year, we have it pegged at $100,000. So as you can see, big fluctuations in local construction. That doesn't mean there's other construction besides local construction, as we'll talk about in the program part of it. But engineering and admin and engineer, admin is the same, engineering is down from the previous year. Construction is down. Roads are down a little bit. Current year, we have $300,000 in new equipment. Next year, we we have $500,000 there with a list of equipment we intend to buy. And instead of dealing with accounting for $11 million worth of, $11 million worth of total, total expenditures and carryover balance, we're dealing with 6.7 million. You have questions about this budget?
I saw. Oh, I missed the number there, no.
Well, I'll, I'll, these numbers are estimated, they're not perfect because we're in over forecasting. We put this together in January to be effective in July and finish up next June. So it's your levy and 75% plus a little bit, just like always, I could spend more money if the will is there and raise taxes. But I'll spend what money you give me on the roads and bridges.
Is this what we approved though? That's the January and it's doing the same.
Correct, yeah, same, same.
Just spread out in a little bit different format and budget, the way we set it up, a little bit different.
These are the 12 categories, admin, engineering, construction, bridges and culverts, roads, traffic control, road clearing, snow and ice control, new equipment, equipment operations, tools, materials, supply, real estate, buildings. And those are the categories and and labor and equipment and whatever else all goes in that category. And people move from roads to bridges and culverts, snow and ice. And snow and ice and road clearing complement one another when we have the big snows. In the winter, we use more money there and theoretically save some of our road clearing funds. And then when the winter is mild or open at the very least, then we cut trees and spend more of that kind of money and less of snow and ice.
Any other questions, Jacob or Chuck?
No, but I'd like to make a motion that we approve the FY 22 DOT budget that JD presented as presented.
My motion? Okay, okay, any other discussion? If not?
I have one more question.
Yes.
Getting the years mixed up here, so the half million dollars for equipment was what? That was a grader or two graders or what was the for 22?
Which, which in 22?
New equipment purchase, that's, what is that?
That's one motor grader.
One grader, then this year have you spent 300,000 now or not?
No, we haven't purchased a motor grader yet.
That was for one this year and then one in 22.
That's our intention.
I think there was some pickups in there too, weren't there JD, next year?
Next year, probably a truck tractor. I'm sorry, I should have that, that, that proposed list in front of me, but it's it's out there. I'll look it up tomorrow.
I believe that of our discussion was that we were going to hold off on this
The second grader?
Until we kind of see how things are addressing by September, you know, August, September and kind of judging and letting.
Right, my original intent was to, you know, get two motor graders on hook, have one delivered in page four in June, if you want in July. However, that wasn't the pleasure of the board. The second motor grader, we'll push that back in here.
Okay. Okay. Okay, been a motion second at this time signify by a vote of aye, those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, all those against, none, so it's passing us one. Okay, thanks JD. Next up is going to be discuss and approve the county five-year program for fiscal year 22.
Now, I do have extra maps, I don't think talking off the map for football law, so I'm getting maps. Because I don't have anything to protect when I talk. And if you want a big map, you're flashing for the road.
The big map give more road names or what does it give?
What?
What's the difference on the big map? It's bigger, just bigger, the road more detailed, road names on there or?
Nope, it's not, well, there's a few road names on there.
Same as, I think the same.
It's the same, as long as it's the same, I can see, all right.
Yeah, fine, the much she grinned, the narrative, not the narrative, but the program, the written program that goes with this is not here. But all the projects show up on the map with the year. And that's, I would suggest a relevant thing here today to see. Now, I would like to address Mr. Seaman's remarks about D Avenue.
Yes.
Speaking China. Get into that before I get into this proposed, proposed program. D Avenue was a chip seal road. I'm not certain it was ever pavement, but it's very hard. It was chewed up before I got here as a part of county engineer Brad Skinner's efforts to reduce the size of the seal coat system, which is a challenge for Bates County and other counties, particularly when there's not a good base underneath them. Iowa soils make good farming, not so good road, road materials. Mr. Seaman is correct. D Avenue, that three mile stretch is one of the higher, I did a quick look at ADTs, just a quick scan across. There are, I don't believe there, there not higher gravel counts on ADTs. Now, that's a 2016 map and we don't have a 2020 count. But I would submit that that's as good a data as we have and would certainly be, you know, whether that is a correct number, the 150 to 170 ADTs a day, it would be higher in relativity or relatively high compared to the rest. When I look across the rest of the gravel, there are other gravels that push 120 or maybe 100. But those are, you know, like this at the end of a pavement or where a pavement turned to to gravel. So he is correct in that, in that regard, it's a high traffic road for gravel in Bates County. Another thing I'd like to point out that was, I was reminded of by conversations with some of the residents up there that just up the road, a little place in Montgomery County lies Culver and there's a concrete pavement going east and west. Culver or Culver, I don't know, whatever it is, it's in, it's in Montgomery County. It's not a real concern of mine, but I do like the connection. You know, and, and, you know, we're going to do some work in the southeast part of the county. And our neighbor to the east, Taylor County is proposing some work similar to what we're doing on J 55 into into Taylor County, connecting up something. So if we're looking for reasons to hard service D Avenue again, that would be one of the, one of the factors that should be considered. Now, it is not, it is not currently on the five-year program. I did, I did add, I only added two projects to our, to the five-year plan we're working on today. The one we're working on now runs from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 25. So I added two projects. I took, I took the base stabilizing, I took a base stabilization and seal coat job that I had. There was three pieces of it. It was Jade Road up in the northeast, running north of Willow up to the Montgomery County line and then west over to 71. We did chew that up a couple of falls ago because it was in dire shape. It was, the road was a, had a poor section, hog wallers where wheel ruts were. You could, you know, when it was raining, you could go surf. There was that stretch, East River Road from two down to J 53 and J 53. That was the three segments of road all in one project. So I, I cut, I cut that apart and added the stretch of J 55 from the quarry east to the county line. And so I have, instead of one project with three in it, I have two projects with two. So there's one additional project. And then a second additional project is a chip seal reservice. We, in 2017 and 2018, we base stabilized with cement powder and put a double chip seal on 230th Street from M 16 to 71. And we did the same thing, same method, base stabilized with cement powder and put a double chip seal on T Avenue, also known as Dump Road between Sham Ball and the, where the corner shop of grounds where the pavement stops. I'm going to put another, lift a chip seal on that.
Question, man?
When was the last time you did a traffic on D Avenue?
Well, the DOT was done on 2016.
16?
Yeah.
I didn't want to change the schedule on my, on my kitchen table or on my cabinet. And I have my own path and I can see there's a terrific amount of traffic on that road. I didn't want to change the schedule on my cabinet and watch.
But what does it cost per mile of chip, chip seal?
Anywhere from 25 to 40,000 dollars. Oil and chips and replacing.
And they've got a pretty good base up there because it was, used to be. We're talking about $120,000 for three miles. Basically.
Close.
JD, are you, I mean, that D Avenue, it's a mile stretch, we can go back to that. It's a, it's a candidate for chip seal or did I misunderstand you to say that it, it was chip seal and it wasn't a good candidate?
Well, it was chip sealed.
But is it?
And some of it's, I mean, you know, I know some of it's quite hard. Now, the mile between 110th and the county line, there's a, there's a drainage structure there with the replacement. I mean, there's work to be done there, but
About $120,000 would maybe get it going?
Be a start.
Because that wouldn't take very much pencil sharpeners and equipment to find that money or somewhere in the budget, I'm sure. Some sort, it's not millions, it's not.
Correct.
If there's that much traffic on.
I think it'd be a good.
It gets going fast.
And adding, adding the chip seal will even speed it up more, I'm afraid, so I hope. It'll just, they'll be able to stop quicker.
Won't be so much dust.
Um, I think probably in all fairness, Jacob, I think this would be a good item for us to ask JD to bring us some more information and we can discuss it and when it's a discussion item where we can discuss it.
I'd be interested in that.
Yep, if that'd be okay JD.
Sure.
But I do have one question JD, that $120,000 and it's not on the five-year plan. If, if this group chooses to put it on the five-year plan, what, what would get moved? What would you just getting?
Well, we'll, we'll put it on the five-year plan and, and work on it. Just like we do all kinds of stuff. It is a federal aid route, so it's not just local dollars that can be spent.
And then one other quick question, I apologize, the sound in that room is horrible. And the lady who was speaking to you, I didn't, I didn't mean to be disrespectful, I didn't. Um, and the, the lady who was speaking to you, I didn't, I didn't mean to be disrespectful, I didn't quite understand her issue, I know it wasn't D Avenue, but what, uh, what, what's her?
It was D Avenue, yeah. And let's come up with. She, she was talking about D Avenue, she invited me very cordially to sit with her on Port Siftie and, and watch some cars drive by. She lives just a quarter mile, half mile off of D. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. Into the east, right? Yeah.
Down the Denne Road?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd just like to see some in downtown west side of the county.
I'm glad we spread work out all around the county.
We'd like to see stuff done on the east side of the county, no way.
Have you guys got more we got?
I don't think so.
No, no, it, it, really, now, this is, this is a valid concern, but if you look at the map, we have projects scattered about the county. I just spent a couple million dollars on a bridge on B Avenue. And three years ago, we built another bridge south of Shan on B Avenue, we got a bridge in the middle. So I don't consider the west side to be short or between everybody.
But we're talking about desk control. Hard surface.
Okay. I'm disputing there, but the folks in the southeast, they'll be telling me all the time about how we go pavements down. And they're right, they're just hard surface seal coats that are beaten, that are beat up bad. And this shape and, and so everybody, it's equal opportunity complaint.
And you can test whether it's there.
Think we spread that? So I could, I can walk, I can walk us through the program here. The first year, the accomplishment year FY '22 is shown in green. I've just got three projects that made it on here, I've got a foreign market ground resurfacing job that did not make the map. It is scattered all over the place and actually it's not, not been developed yet, that'll be based on where the needs are of the foreign market gravels, but we have pending funding, of course. We have a bridge north of Essex over the Nishna Batna, it's in the final design phase, we have acquired, we have the permits needed from the DNR and Corps of Engineers. We have NEPA and SHIPA clearance, so we have National Environmental Policy Act. We have all the box checked for that. In the same way, of course, historical preservation folks and the cultural folks. And, and we will have to mitigate, we will have to sign the river when we're doing construction, so the paddlers, the people that use the river for recreation are advised. This is the new, a new rule from, from above that on streams that have paddle routes designated by the DNR, we have to, we have to make signs and provide access to and from the river at those locations. It's also a year we have scheduled for an automatic resurface on Stan Road from Highway 2 north to the county line. It's been pushed back for several years, we do have a skeleton plan development on that underway. We could, could be let this winter for next, next year's construction. Uh, it's too late to get into letting this year for this year's construction, they have good prices. And then down south of Lorinda is another lift of chip seal on the base stabilized 230th Street and T Avenue. That was done in 2017, 2018. So it's, it's time to come back and put another lift on that to prevent a deterioration of the base. That's the next year accomplishment year. The year after that, this year 2023 is in a blue, lighter blue. I have several bridges on that, we have a bridge down in Buchanan Township on J-53, that's also 280th Street east of Vine down at Bob Hill. West of Bartamans, if you know where that's at. Got a project on South Z Road or C Avenue down hard. That seal coat was ground up several years ago, south of J-52. There's a 150-foot bridge and we anticipate putting a single, a single barrel reinforced concrete mops culvert in there. It'll take a bunch of dirt, but the, the bridge is just spanning the gap as to, as opposed to dealing with hot, we don't need those, that kind of hydraulic capability on there because upstream is a single, is a single barrel culvert. That's, uh, and then the same year, this is, of course, pending funding, we do not have funding lined up, but in 2023, the same bridge that's going north of Essex, we're gonna, gonna build a replacement west of Essex. Uh, that bridge isn't quite as far along. But it's a twin, the, they're both long concrete beam bridges there. Estimated cost, two and a half million, and that's what we're looking for. Other grant monies for those, those large bridges over the Nishna Batna. That takes care of 2023, so 2024 have one phase of base stabilization and seal coat work. Both at the East River Road from two down to J-53 and the, and the J Road up in the northeast part, and then a culvert over on F Avenue south of 230th, that's the only bridge on, on F Avenue between Highway 2 and J-52. Well, actually, all the way into North Pole. There's only one bridge along that route. And that's this F Avenue culvert we intend to replace in 2024. Just a couple of projects in 2024. We get about a million dollars of foreign market construction money a year, and so with these bigger, with these bigger projects, we need to have a ever flow or, you know, a down here and then up here when it comes to the major construction. 2025, once again, only two projects on the map here, Golden in gold color. A second base stabilization and seal coat of J-55 east of Braddyville. Uh, it's, we're, we have currently under contract with about a mile and a half of J-55 from the bridge over to the intersection south of Quarry. Is under contract with them in Nash right now, we're waiting on better weather and contractor availability to get them in, they also have a stretch on F Avenue north of North Pole. Part of that project. And J-53 from Sham Ball where, where he, where he stopped with the job in 2018, down the diagonal over east on 280th Street to the county line. Now, that would be providing the wind turbine construction has come and gone or gone. As a case maybe we, we don't, we don't want or we don't intend to repair the road prior to this possible wind turbine activity, which is very hard on roads. Don't want to fix it, don't want to fix it twice. So there is, there is uncertainty or there would be questions about the time of that, but I put it in the year. So it's in the program, could be brought forward then should, should the need rise. 2026 has two bridge projects in it, these were pushed back from, from the current program. They're both in the center of the county, a bridge, there's a bridge on a curve up toward Nyman. It's serving as a detour rail or, or F-20 bridge right now. And it's due to be replaced. Also, the bridge down on 190th Street over the middle Tarkio has some challenges at the east of Butler End of it. And, and due for replacement. That's fiscal year 2026. Those are the projects that are on the current five-year plan. Now, if the, the board chooses to, to add a D Avenue between now and Thursday, when this is due to the DOT, just, just let me know. Or
I don't know, JD, I think, I think we've talked about D Avenue for a second, get dogs quiet. We've talked about D Avenue a lot and we've heard from residents along D Avenue for quite some time, and I think we, we've all come to an agreement that traffic counts are, are such, and hazards are such that it really merits a, a serious hard look. And I personally, I'd like to see us get something positive done with D Avenue. And I'm not sure if that means delaying another project or getting those 55 Nash ramblers out of the shed so that we don't have to buy you a snowplow. But I think we need get, we need to get
You lost me there with the Nash Ramper, it's okay.
I think, never mind.
Chuck, do you want to make that a motion?
I would, I would move that we accept the, that we accept the five-year program with a commitment to adjust for D Avenue. And I'm not sure how we do that, what, what makes the most sense, but I'd like to see us get D Avenue done.
I'll second that.
Huh?
Jacob, what was that?
I said, I second that. No, I'll second that.
Yep, okay, Jacob's gonna second that motion, JD, before we vote, um, do you want to bring additional to us or?
No, I have a, you know, I just added this chip seal on 230th and D Avenue to the program this past week.
Okay.
Uh, I'm, we're doing it in fiscal year '22. So, I mean, that starts in July. And so we have a whole year to get that done, and then for two is lit up, you know, I've got two routes. Uh, if, if it's the, the intention of the board to take, take care of this or to to respond to the the complaints of the residents up on D Avenue, you know, we can certainly do that. Now, you know, there will be others who are interested in, in having their piece of hard surface restored, you know, there's routes that were chewed up, up north and, and actually all over the county. But, you know, like, like we discussed, there's a, it is a major factor. The federal money could be used if found, foreign market money, waterway money.
Is it the highest traffic count of anyone that's been ground up or not?
Well, based on, based on the, the map, based on a quick scan of the map, it's the highest gravel that I, I've.
It's not just a luxury, it's a.
I mean, there's, there's
Safety.
There's some data supporting their need for, or their wish for improvement. I mean, we, we, back when we were doing the base stabilization work in 2017, 2018, we had a project and you may recall, Blanchard came to the, to the board and, and got a several thousand foot stretch of their street, which is our, you know, under our jurisdiction. Added, we added that to the program, or to the, we added that to the project. This would be, it could be done similarly to that.
Yeah, I think that traffic count's a really important thing, and I know there'll be other residents saying, well, why not me? But the traffic counts, I think, would minimize it.
We can tell them that they have 30 vehicles a day, not 150.
Yeah. Plus, I, I think what you mentioned about tying into Montgomery County, much like the plan is between Page and Prima or Taylor with regard to pass-throughs, I, I think that uh, when you've got that connectivity piece attached high traffic count, uh, it behoves us to, to move that way and to, to get that done. And to the residents who have been patient for a very long time, we appreciate that patience and your professional approach of, you know, keeping this in front of us. I, I wish we had unlimited dollars that we could have had it done for you by now, but, but JD, I think it, it's the right thing to do.
How many years is a chip seal roughly last?
Five, it, it's, it's a function of the base, the chip seal is just the skin
Right.
that sheds water.
An oil base, but how often do we rock the roads like we're gonna do the 300 ton per mile, is that every? About a year?
Every road, every other year.
So for the last six years, we'd have about 18,000, looked like maybe in per mile, at $6,321 a ton. I was trying to compare this here to see what we're rock versus chip seal. So it's about half, well, depends on what you get done for on the chip seal. Okay, well, like I said, traffic count would be the, if it's the highest one, I've not seen the map. Haven't looked at, if it's the highest one, then that makes sense.
And I know you said that traffic data is what, 2018 JD, it's three years old now, two and a half years old.
16, yeah.
Um, and I think COVID put the DOT behind, typically you do that every four years, but we don't have our 20 numbers yet, do you know when our 20 numbers will be?
They counted 20 and we chose not to accept them because the traffic numbers are down.
Oh, I see, okay.
I, I'm not aware of what they, what their plan is to make that up. That was discussed in the executive board a couple of Fridays ago.
That throughout the state they were down?
No, the, what, what they counted, they, they split the state into four, four quadrants and count a quadrant every, every fourth year. So last year was southwest Iowa's time to be counted and it was a law count, given the nature of shutdown. Wouldn't have been representative of what real traffic is.
Jacob, anything else that you see there?
I'm, I'm trying to find a gravel road type. I'm, I'm trying to find a gravel road with that many, I haven't seen any yet. It's a hundred and seventy miles is the right number, a hundred and seventy if you're there. First two miles is a hundred and seventy and the third mile is a hundred and fifty. Yeah, it's higher than. I can't find anything else over a hundred, so. I'm doing it our own.
Not lost.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Okay. Well, from that point, that stands and makes a lot of sense.
Okay, well, we've got a motion to approve the five-year program with the amendment to add in that three-mile section on D Avenue. Um, all those, any other discussion? Okay, this time you want um, go ahead and make uh, have a vote and signify by an aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, JD?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, well, before I submit this to the DOT, uh, on Thursday, I'll add uh, add a seal coat project on D Avenue.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item. Sorry, we're running a little bit late, but it's discuss and approve the courthouse lawn and restroom usage for the twenty twenty-one chamber events. And I did not get a copy of the chamber events. Do you have that?
Oh, let me look.
Did you see it, Jacob?
Uh, I don't think I did.
Okay. G, fifth Cruisin' Clorinda.
Good.
Uh, that's from ten AM to seven PM. Uh, October second is Southwest Iowa Band Jamboree from eight to noon. And November twenty-sixth, uh, that's on the Lightning Christmas Parade. Restrooms will be open five to eight PM. Uh, we had approved at the previous meeting for the um, concert, yeah, the Cowboy Concert, Cowboy Church. Uh, so at this time, I guess, um, I would entertain a motion to, for those three chamber events. Uh, the one thing I will say in the past, we've always had somebody that's been able to come and unlock and then make sure they lock. Um, the only other item I would add in for maybe some discussion is do we need to start asking for like a deposit and then a checking of it before we give the deposit back at each event? Uh, in the past, we've had some issues with everything being gone or some messes, some serious messes where nobody has kind of followed up before they left. Um, so I guess I just put that out for a little discussion. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are.
Well, you know, the, the number of times that they've been open, we have had some problems in the past. I think the, the number of problems we've had is probably minimal in the large number of times. However, that being said, with the Cowboy Church event, Scott Davison had offered to uh, have a crew clean it up. Uh, and I think that, and I haven't talked uh, much with Elaine Farwell at the Chamber as the other requestor, but I'm sure they'd be amenable to uh, coming up with a plan for us to, to ensure that the restrooms are not a total disaster when our crew comes back the, the next day. Although I don't know, you know, if a deposit at this point is necessary. I think we just use some common sense and work together and hopefully avoid any, you know, issues. And if they do come up, then deal with them at that point would be my suggestion.
I'll go with that.
Okay. Okay, so I take a motion to approve the courthouse lawn and restroom usage for the twenty twenty-one chamber events.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Alan, for you vote. Just another uh, quick thing about, uh, about that. We've had several employees wanting to know with, with the threat of COVID. And I think that this motion and our intent at this point is to open those to the public during these events only. I don't think this is a decision to uh, permanently open them yet. Is that kind of?
I should have preface, I should have preface that to uh, yes, this would just be for special events that we feel where the bathrooms would be uh, beneficial to the community or county residents. So, okay, okay, we got a motion and a second. All those signified by a sign of an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, real quick before we go to the last item, uh, I forgot, I promised Angie Dow that I would mention it on a public comment that uh, so I'm gonna step out of line here. Don't yell at me, Jacob. Uh, the driver's license bureau is gonna be open in Shenandoah starting tomorrow from eight fifteen to four. So that means that uh, they will not be open here uh, to do driver's licenses. This will be the first time back in Shenandoah, so everybody over in Shenandoah will have a fair shot at uh, getting in. So if we can get that in the news media, that would be wonderful. So, thank you. Okay, last item up is uh, discuss tax abatement in the event of a loss. Um, we had a, a case where somebody questioned their taxes due to a fire that uh, um, destroyed somebody's home in the county here this year, but the taxes had already been set. So it's very confusing on how that all works. Uh, Chuck, do you want to add what you know so far from your discussion with the family?
Yeah, if I can get this dog to quit barking, I sure will. Uh.
They're up and over.
Huh? Yeah, I, I talked with Dina Sanz, the uh, daughter of uh, the family that lost everything with the fire. There was insurance on the, on the uh, uh, on the property. But the, the real question is, and this seems really unfair, but this is Iowa law. The way taxes are uh, collected and assessed, we're always in arrears. So the tax bill that is due on this property is actually payment pre-fire. Uh, you know, this will be, this will be reassessed in January, and if there's no structure there, then uh, it would be reassessed at a lower value. Uh, typically just for the value of the land. And uh, I know that seemed kind of, kind of unfair. At first glance, it's like, wow, these poor people, uh, how can we help them? But the reality is uh, that Iowa law works. We, we do have a cause, a clause in the c- code where we could uh, we could abate those taxes uh, for a total destruction. There's a little bit of fuzzy language in that code relative to insurance, and there was insurance in this case. And I guess after looking at that code, my thought on, on that code is that uh, that's designed for a more catastrophic event that would take out a city block like a tornado or a huge fire where we could abate in an emergency, because typically in those cases, I would guess we'd have some federal aid or FEMA would come in or the state would come in. So uh, I, I don't think, I, I don't think that we should abate him because uh, at this point, after studying it, even though it seems really awkward and weird and, and kind of mean, I think that's, you know, next year there will be savings on the tax bill because the structure's not there. But that, that's kind of what I ascertained. I don't know, you guys have read the same stuff, so what do you think?
Jacob, any thoughts?
Uh, just it being in the rear. You're not paying taxes on it.
Right, right.
I understand their dilemma. Their house is gone.
Yeah.
But it, it starts in January.
Right.
So there won't be taxed on this year at all.
Right.
When they pay for that next year.
Right.
The following year. So really their taxes are gonna show it. If it happened halfway through the previous year, then we maybe could.
Yeah.
It'd be different. Somehow.
Yeah, it's very confusing with taxes when they're behind like they are or they're, yeah.
One year in the rear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, well, it's just on discussion, so I don't think at this time we're going to be able to um, make any decisions anyway. I guess I would just encourage those families, continue to stay in touch with us and, and see what we can do.
How much is the taxes for?
I don't remember that property, what it was worth.
Matters or not, I'm just a not.
I don't remember, Jacob.
I can't remember. I don't think it was there.
But it burned, the house burned January twenty-one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what it said on the email here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and they did have it insured, and he has found a place to live, uh, I understand. So I talked to the daughter-in-law last night, so.
So anyway, it's uh, just interesting how that kind of works and kind of brings into focus again the assessed valuations that our assessor and his crew put on houses. Uh, you know, at first glance, the, the insurance payment was considerably more uh, than uh, the assessed value. But that, that's not untypical. Insurance uh, will typically pay the actual cash value at the point of loss, and then until it's rebuilt, they, they won't fill in the gap between ACV and uh, uh, policy limits. But anyway, we, our hearts go out to, to Deena's family uh, for the loss, but uh, they'll realize the savings next year.
Okay. Uh, next item will be to approve amendments. I know there was one correction that was sent out, um, and uh, that is in the unofficial copy that we've got here. Is there any other thoughts before we have a motion to approve? If not, take a motion to approve amendments?
Yeah, I'm good with the amendment. I just want to make sure that if I have a amendment in the future, it's not a problem either. So that looks good to me.
Yep. And, and thank you Chuck for sending that out and giving it to us in time so we could read through it out of the meeting. That's wonderful. Um, okay, there's a motion to approve the amendments. Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and at this time, take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you for attending tonight.
Thanks, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody online. Thank you, everybody here. And uh, we'll see what we can get done here. Hopefully the weather will behave and not all the traffic is gonna go on your road.